All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Not me.
Alderman Novit, the chair is yours.
Thanks for the day. Members of the council, this is the March 4th, 2013 meeting of the Lake Forest City Council. Thank you for allowing me to replace Mayor Schoenhyder for the day. First thing that we're going to do is call our role. And Viddy?
Okay. Acting Mayor Schoenhyder is absent. Alderman Novit?
Here.
Alderman Waldeck?
Here.
Alderman Pandalion?
Here.
Alderman Moore?
Here.
Alderman Tac?
Here.
Alderman Reisenberg is absent. Alderman Palmer is absent. Alderman Edelman?
Here.
Six present, three absent. Mr. Acting Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. First item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. I ask everyone to rise and join in. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thanks. First area on the agenda would be reports of city officers. And first section of that would be comments by me. And the sad part for everyone is, I have no comments. I'm just thrilled to be here. And again, we're looking forward to a real mayor being here. So, I'm going to move on to Bob Kylie.
Thank you, Mr. Acting Chair and members of the council. It's my pleasure this evening to bring before you the Superintendent of Schools in Lake Forest, Mike Simick. You might remember that Mike has been in this council chamber as once before he came and spoke to you during the teacher strike. So, he's here this evening during much happier times to fill us in on what's going on with the schools and the most pressing issue, which is, will there be school tomorrow? So, Mike, podium is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Kylie. And I don't know what the local superstitions are here yet. Where I came from, it was wearing one's pajamas inside out and flushing ice cubes down in the toilet and sleeping with a spoon under one's pillow that did the magic of getting school to close. And so, I'm not sure what the local incantations are here, but I know there's a lot going on all around town. And I want you to be on the inside, get the inside scoop on that. So, when I am done presenting here, I'm going to go make the calls. And we've got a really bad storm coming and it's not clear that we're going to be able to get kids home tomorrow after school. So, we are the last in the county to close school. So, you heard it here first. All right? So, with that, I'd like to thank Mr. Kylie for his ongoing work. And your city administrators and staff have been fantastic for us to work with already. And it's one of the real pleasures is to come in with such a high-functioning city and such an eager group, whether it's Mr. Kylie, whether it's Chief Held, the support of the council for the Emotional Wellness Task Force, also finance, parks and rec and public works have already reached out and those are just the ones that I can remember. And so, that's something that adds value to us. Mr. Kylie and I have met on a number of occasions and will do again soon, so I can better understand how the city works through its boards and whatnot. Very interested in that and look forward to learning from that. So, with that, I'd like to give you an update on the schoolwork that we're doing right now. This is NWEA. These are assessment numbers that we use. It's a test product that is one of the best, if not the best, in the nation for assessing student academic progress. We are at the top of their scale across the board or near the top, actually. This last year, there was a slight dip, which was very interesting, because what we learned was that when you, we have so many students that perform so well, that students exhaust the question bank that the program has, would automatically adjust to the students proficiency. And so, we had students that were in third and fourth grade that began to get age inappropriate questions, like things on euthanasia and that sort of thing, which was very disturbing for them. And so, the accuracy of the instrument, because we have so many high kids, began to be reduced. And that's one of the things that is reflected here. So, 95% and above in all grades. And again, one of the really interesting things was that our kids do so well, that we are really struggling to find an instrument that accurately measures our kids and the reading in particular, that remains within the boundaries of age-appropriate subject matter. Your ACT scores, the average ACT score for the high school is 26.9, which is a stratospheric number. It's not high, it is beyond belief high. One of the most interesting things about this data point that came up this year was looking at PSAT scores, which students take in their sophomore year and comparing those to the ACT, which students take in their sophomore year. And the reason that that data point is interesting is wanted to see whether or not the test prep that many of our kids do is reflected in that really high number and that growing number. The percentile on PSAT in the sophomore years, so students don't begin to do test prep in sophomore year, they wait until their junior year if they're going to do it. The percentile of the PSAT and that ACT score that you see there are within one percentage point of each other. So, they are exactly lined up. So, what that reflects is a very, very strong indicator that the value that students are getting from school is from school, not from a test prep agency. So, that number is among the highest in the nation. Without any question, your high school, your local public high school is within the best of the best nationally on any, by any measurement. One of the other interesting things about that number is that that number has continued to go up as the district has placed a greater and grace, greater focus on emotional wellness. So, one of the things you see in the research is that, hey, if you do these things, it might actually be reflected in higher achievement. And that steady rise is an indicator of that really interesting trend. So, focusing on a balanced and happy, healthy childhood experience actually is not pulling that number down. And again, the council has been good enough to support that work. One of the things that we're working on as a district, and this is an indicator, this number here, 1870, these are the three big nations. It's a little quiz here. At the, in 1870, that one is, everybody recognize that flag?
Great Britain.
And in the middle?
Germany.
Germany. And at the bottom?
France.
France. And then move to 1973, the United States has shifted into the leading economic nation in the world. And below that, we recognize the Japanese flag. And then Germany has dropped from the second to the third. And then 2010, Germany, France, Great Britain are completely out of the picture. And over here in 2030, there's a flag that you might or might not recognize. That's China. And this one down below is less recognizable.
That's Brazil.
India.
India.
And so, one of the very interesting things is a book that I'm working on right now. It's called 10 Trillion Dollar Prize. And one of the notes from that is what the authors say is a fact that in the next 10 years, there will be a billion new middle-class consumers within China and in India. And frankly, this picture here, these numbers, the fact that, you know, Asia rises is very disconcerting to a lot of our, a lot of our families, a lot of our residents as well. We're looking at Asia and the Mandarin program in terms of what is best for our children's future. One of the things that we tend towards, we all do, is whatever we experienced as children ourselves, we want to give that to our kids. Our children's future is going to wind up looking very different economically because of these changes. And so, our responsibility is to prepare children for their future and not our past. Whether that's comfortable or not is something that we're going to have to, have to work through, frankly. I'm a Western Civ guy, so where I'm coming from, I was a German teacher. My wife's a French teacher and neither of those countries are represented up there. If I got a free ticket to go somewhere, I would not go to Asia. I would head to Western Europe. But in terms of economic opportunity for our children, someone is going to provide the goods and services for that billion new middle-class consumers in Asia. And that can be our children or it can be someone else's children. And our interest, obviously, is to give our children the greatest advantage possible in that arena. So, we have a Mandarin program. It's in its second successful year. Kids divide their day 50-50 between English and Mandarin. And one of the most interesting parts of that is to go in and watch kindergarteners. Even at the very beginning, the first days, they don't care what language the lady is speaking, because little kids are only interested in whether or not they get the big idea. Right about third grade, kids start worrying about whether they understand the words or not. Until then, it's just like you ask one of the little kids, "Hey, what are you guys working on?" "I don't know, but we're going outside in a minute." And it's fascinating to watch that, that complete indifference to, "I understood every word. I didn't understand much, but I got the big idea." They just aren't worried about what they don't know. And it's fantastic to watch. We also have an extraordinarily good kindergarten teacher, which helps with that. We have 110 students in kindergarten, first and second grade right now. We also received national recognition for this. And we got grants from a variety of places, including the state of Illinois. Our taxation rates, item of interest, I don't know if you've seen this, this information before now or not, but we have, we compare our tax rates to our neighbors for what a tax is paid in Lake Forest. And this is all on a million-dollar house would be $3,970. If you moved across the street, across Old Elm, your tax would be $7,223 and so on. I won't read all those numbers with you, but across the board, we have a significantly lower tax rate than our neighbors. And for District 67, that number is, is an even bigger differential there between us and the other folks. Quite significant differences in our taxes. We'll also be speaking to our realtors this week. We have a meeting with them and these numbers are of great interest to them, obviously. And one of the interests that we have as a school district is to attract as many nice and educated and interested in education families as we possibly can. And so, we hear all the time how important the school district is to people's property values and to the attractiveness of the community. And we're going to work really hard to maintain that. We also have, pardon the typo, I think there should be three large As, AAA bond rating for Lake Forest. And the audit this year, there were no findings of any kind. And that is, that is, we are one of, the one or two percent in the state that have an audit that has no findings in it. Brief assessment, people have been quite interested for reasons, for a variety of reasons, on my assessment of our schools, our school districts. One of the things I'd tell you is that you probably already know, because you live here yourself, you live in a remarkable community with incredible amount of support for our children and the schools. And you go onto an APT meeting at nine o'clock in the morning and you'll have 50 parents there trying to find whatever way possible to help the school district get better and to provide services for our students. It's nothing short of amazing. We have families and kids who value their teachers and their experiences in school. One of the really nice things to see from staff across the board, whether it's elementary or high school, is that there is a very genuine and very significant affection that the kids have for their teachers and that their teachers have for the children. And it is everywhere. We have very smart teachers working with our children and the community. There's also a significant number of very forward-looking programs. The reading program is a very good example of that in the elementary. You think of how we learned to read, basal instruction, everybody read out of the same book, Dick and Jane and so on. Now, kids come in and they are, they read at very different levels with very different books, all in the same class. And the reason that's important is that children learn to read much faster when they read just right books than when they read books that are not at their level. And that differentiated instruction makes a very big difference. We have great learning cultures in our schools, again, all of them. And in my estimation, you have programming, you have staff, you have students and you have facilities that are worthy of the community standards and the community expectations. Your students, by the way, are, at every turn, your very best ambassadors. Have a meeting, I believe it's tomorrow, with students. And one of the fascinating things from them is their perspectives on those sorts of things that we're working on. Kids have a strange ability sometimes to synthesize what everybody in the room has a sense of and can't say it briefly. And they do that. So, that's one of the reasons that we pull them together on a regular basis. And so, with that, I'd be happy to entertain any questions that you might have. Yes, sir.
You had a grid comparing real estate taxes on hypothetical house. What about that ACT score of 26.9? How does that measure up to Highland Park, New Trier, Deerfield, Stevenson?
We are in the, we are in the 99th percentile nationally, essentially is what that means. And so, we are all, all those schools are bunched all together. And so, those scores are all equally super, super high. And year to year, it might nudge up a little bit or down a little bit, but they're close together at the top, at the top nationally. The North Shore schools are, I'll give you an example. I came from Michigan. We're at 26.9. The highest schools, Bloomfield Hills, Gross Point, they're below 25, to put that in perspective. So, that 26.9, what that means is our average student is within the range of acceptance at the University of Michigan, University of Illinois. That's the average kid's score. The ACT on math alone, we are in the 88th percentile. The average kid is in the 88th percentile nationally. And so, what that means is our average kid is 38 percentile points higher than the average kid nationally. And that is unbelievable. But compares very favorably.
Other questions?
Mike, I have one question that you might be able to help the council on is, obviously, last time you were here, we're very difficult times for the school. How are things today? We move forward and what's the future?
Much, much better, much more productive, I would say. One of the fascinating things that came out of the strike preparation was a meeting with the students. We had 50 kids in a room to help us look at the strike plan. And there was a sentiment that was, I don't know how widely held, but it was held by a number of folks of, throw the bums out. Mr. Hoffman mentioned that at his meeting that we had before we opened school. And there was some response to that, both positive and, and, you know, supporting that and others that did not support that sentiment of, throw the bums out means replace them all. What was interesting was to talk to the students. And every single student in the room said, "We love our teachers and we need to get them back." Now, we'll, we'll help, we'll help put together the, you know, we'll give you our opinions on this stuff, but make no mistake about it, we need our teachers." And that affection was the same from the teachers for, for the students. And that is one of the important things that we learned in the course of that. I think with, with, obviously, there's an experience that we don't want to repeat. A lot of school districts, a very unusual year with a lot of strikes this past year. And there's a great deal of speculation of why that might be. In my experience, one of the things that a strike is an indicator of or struggling labor relations is of lack of relationships, a failure of various relationships. And I hope that the union and the board, I think, is fully on, in agreement with us. There's Harvard Negotiations Project to pull people together and work through so that our negotiations next time is a problem-solving rather than a positional struggle. So, much better in the building, much, you know, people came back to work and we worked through things pretty quickly. But I'm, we're really already preparing for, hey, how do we avoid this for next time?
Well, I've got two at the middle school, two at the high school. So, they all love it. Thank you for everything you're doing.
Good. Thank you. And I don't know if the council knows that, I have a fifth grader at Deer Pass and I have two at the high school. Have very much skin in the game and really impressed with the schools as a, as a, as a whole and also individually.
Yeah, just comment, I'm mirroring what Bob said in the council. You know, certainly, when you came into your job, you hit the ground running. As I look back on the high school in District 67 over the last year, there's been a wide range of issues that far go beyond strikes. We had dilemmas early last year with student, students as a whole and their well-being. And I think we've come a long way. And I just appreciate your efforts in kind of calming and getting a hand on the rudder and moving forward in a positive direction. Certainly, we've come a long way since the beginning of the year. So, just appreciation all around on my part.
Thank you very much for the council's continuing support for, for that work. We've passed a number of those really difficult anniversaries already this year and hope to end the school year in a really positive fashion. We're headed towards that now.
Thank you.
I have one question. Are you done?
Oh, no. Yeah, we had it.
I just was curious, I don't think I ever found out what the outcome of the strike slash negotiations was.
There was an agreement and we moved on, just kidding.
That part I got.
Yeah. The, the numbers, I will not get the numbers correct if I give them to you here today. But it was an agreement that, from the board's perspective, put them, that continued their ability on that, continued their ability to remain on the path to black. And that was what Mr. Carey and Mrs. Golan came and spoke about last time. And that was one of the primary things that the board was interested in. And, you know, we maintain our status as a highly compensating school district for our teachers. Don't diminish our ability to, to attract and retain quality people. So, but the exact numbers I can't give you.
Where can we get those?
I can, I'll be happy to have Mr. Alvis provide those tomorrow to Mr. Kylie and he'll forward those on. Okay?
Great. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you. Any other comments from city manager?
Just one. We were going to have a presentation on the city's incubator program. Unfortunately, Susan Kelsey is ill this evening and since this has really been her pride and joy for the last three, four months, I told her we would push this off to the March 18th meeting. However, in her place, and I'm going to ask Mike Thomas to come forward and give us a quick update as to, the question came up earlier this evening about where the cell phone ban signs are. And, and Mike, I'll just mention that while you're sitting there, somebody even made the comment that the state may actually pass their law before we get our signs up. So, that's a little incentive for us to get going here.
We will beat them. I promise you. We actually received the material late last week. We actually have to apply them to the aluminum signs themselves and we'll be doing that this week. We should have 10 to, 10 to 15 of them up by the end of the week. Again, depending on snow, but I actually think we'll have at least 10 or 12 of them up. We'll start with the, replacing the smaller signs that are out there and then we'll add to the inventory, so.
Very good. Thanks, Mike. Appreciate it. And that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you. Thanks, Mike. Next section for council tonight is comments by council members. And first on that is from the public, our Property and Public Land Committee. And Mike?
Yeah, the PPL committee met February 18th. One of the things we did was revise, we agreed to propose revisions in a written policy having to do with land, with real property owned by the city of Lake Forest. We've had a written policy, this isn't a statute, but we've had a written policy to guide us, give us a framework within which to work for inventorying property, for leasing property, for selling property, for retaining property. But we really had no, a framework for potential acquisitions. And as you know, on occasion, a ship passes in the night and there's an opportunity possibly to acquire a property for the benefit of the community. And we had no framework to address that. So, on page 10 of your packets, there's a redline copy of revisions to the prior policy. And it essentially just creates an additional section, various sections, having to do with acquisitions of property. And we went, the Public Property and Lands Committee went through the revisions and everybody was in consensus on it. And it's here for your review.
And just for the sake of it, are we taking any action on this or is it merely just comment?
No, it would be for approval by the city council.
Okay. Any comments by members of council? My one question that I had, Mike, was just, and again, I'll page through it. There was some comment in there that acknowledged that we weren't getting in the business of acquisition or profiting on real estate. We're not competing on the open market with the citizens. And I'm looking for the exact quote in here, but there were two provisions. And I think it was in the policy, which was Section 8, that the city ordinarily shouldn't pursue the acquisition of real estate for the purpose of displacing private, the private real estate market. And then, with that knowledge, Section 1.1.8 did go into the concept that the city could strategically buy real estate for the purpose of making a profit. And I was just confused by seemingly a conflict between those two provisions.
Well, that's a good point you raised, but that clearly is not the intention of this policy, is to get in the business of acquiring property for profit. A prime example I can give you is when, okay, what's it called over there? Where the, over at the end of Old Mill Road, what was it previously, the Grove School?
Grove School.
Yeah, the Grove School. The Grove School became available and the city pounced on it. And they did so without a framework within which to work. Then it's been successful with hindsight, but this is to address those kinds of situations.
Okay.
If I, if I might add, the reference in 1.1.8 is just one of the series of criteria that are to be evaluated in considering this. I would presume that if that's the only criterion that's being satisfied, that would not be a basis for acquisition.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to be sensitive to it if we're going to put that as a policy. Any other comments? Do we have a motion?
Our motion, we approve the revised revisions is outlined in the redline copy in your packet.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none?
Correct.
Motion passes.
One other bit of PPL business, we were negotiating to lease the north end of the train station. We decided because of the grant that recently came through, that potentially there'd be conflicts between the tenant building out their space and the construction that's going to be going on there. So, we kind of- So we kind of put a hold on any leasing plans, although we're certainly open to any interest potential lessees may have in the space. It's about 1,700 square feet to useable. Is that right, 17, 16?
Is that the space where Northern Trust was?
Correct.
Yeah, which is beautiful space, good for real estate lawyer's office or...
You're welcome to propose.
Just a thought. Thanks, and hopefully that space will fill up soon. Any other comments by council members?
Yep, I have one. This is the, it's a draft of the document we put together with our first community meeting. And we're gonna, I guess we're gonna talk about this in depth next meeting, but I wanted to give everybody a copy of the draft, not for, just to get an idea about it, to be prepared for the meeting for next time. We had about 30 people, it was a good discussion, Alderman was there. But we're, part of what we're doing is not just doing the topic that, that we did last time, as everyone's going to do a topic and it might make sense to have one format to bring information back. So when you think of your own topics, you might want to think of a format. And that's it.
And if I can add to that, it was really a terrific turnout of people.
It was good.
I thought it was real beneficial. And unfortunately, David set the bar real high with that meeting. It's going to be tough to follow in his footsteps.
Yeah, well, anyway. It was a good, it was a good meeting. The content, we're still working on the content. It's more of a format discussion and what got listed and things like that, so got a lot more coming.
Well, just for the sake of publicity, is there another meeting scheduled at this point?
There's not one scheduled for March because of spring break. We took March off, but the next one is in April and I believe that Alderman Pendeleon's going to do, well, I'll let you explain it.
April 18th, we're going to have the second community forum. The subject will be, how do I put this in one phrase? The diversity or lack thereof of the housing stock in Lake Forest and opinions as to the appropriate direction to follow. So, we have a more elaborate statement that I can't memor, I haven't got committed to memory, but it's, it's a couple of sentences, but it's, it's to that effect. That the point being, how do people feel about the housing options we have available to us? Are they sufficient? Are they not sufficient? Should we encourage or discourage any particular type of, of housing going forward and so forth?
Okay, and, yeah, I'll be looking forward to those and eventually we'll all be on the hot seat, so appreciate it. And David, thanks for going first and kind of seeing how it, you set the bar.
I was told to go first. Thank you.
Sometimes it's better to push than, be pushing than jump, right?
The heat's off. Well, assuming that that's it for comments from council members, we'll go to the next area on the agenda, which would be opportunity for citizens to address city council on non-agenda items. Is there anyone present from the public who'd like to address city council at this point? And what I thought, I saw Susan Banks move. No, okay, there being no one. We're going to go to the next area on the agenda, which would be items for the omnibus vote consideration. And I'm going to read off all the items on the omnibus agenda. If there's any comments from any council members, if, where we want to expand on what's been provided in the packet, please, you know, tell me and we'll stop before taking a vote.
Can, can we ask questions or do we have to remove it from omnibus to ask questions?
I'll, I'll refer to city attorney on that one.
I was going to say, yes, you can ask questions.
It doesn't prevent trying to having discussion, but if you wish to have anything removed, usually because it's not something that everyone's got a consensus about, then that would just be a request to have that item removed.
Okay.
Okay. So, I think the answer is, yes, you can ask questions.
Thank you.
You were the guinea pig on that. Anyways, the first item would be approval of the check register for the period of January 26th through February 22nd, 2013. Second item on the omnibus agenda would be approval of the capital expense for the fitness center treadmills. That's one I've been waiting for. Third would be award of bid for the replacement and upgrade of the police department tajos, including the fiscal year 2014, included in the fiscal year 2014 equipment budget. Fourth item would be award of bid for the replacement of the two unmarked police vehicles, included in the fiscal year 2014 capital equipment budget. Fifth item would be ratification of sports field improvement fund policy. And then, last item on the agenda would be, excuse me, second to last would be the boat basin dredging policy. Final item would be approval of the February 19th, 2013 regular city council minutes. Any comments or questions regarding any of the items on the omnibus agenda?
I, I, sorry.
Be my guest.
On the ratification of the sports field improvement fund policy, I don't understand, it says here in the background discussion that based on city council direction at the time, the program was implemented. So, does that mean that, it makes it sound like we passed it. I, I think I was here, but did we go back and look at the video or anything or did we vote?
We did go back and look at the video and the minutes, and unfortunately, it looks as though it was discussed at the committee, the whole meeting. You might remember Alderman Graham House had made that presentation and he sat on this ad hoc committee. Then, for some reason, we skipped over it at the regular council meeting. But I think everybody was working off the assumption that it had been approved. And then when, recently, when the question came up, show us in the minutes where it had been approved, we were not able to produce that, even though we know that there had been a lot of discussion, both at the park and rec board, at the city council, and also at this ad hoc rec and finance committee meeting. So, really, this is just to...
We just had to cross a T.
Yeah.
Okay.
Codify it.
I just didn't understand that description, so, all right.
I was as confused as you when they first mentioned that they couldn't find it either.
No, it's good to be thorough.
Yeah.
Okay. That's all I have.
Any other questions or comments? If there's none, do we have a motion for approval of the omnibus agenda?
So moved.
Second.
And this will be a roll call vote.
Alderman Novit?
Aye.
Alderman Waldeck?
Aye.
Alderman Pendeleon?
Aye.
Alderman Moore?
Aye.
Alderman Tac?
Aye.
Alderman Edelman?
Aye.
Six, zero, motion carries.
And thanks. Next section on the agenda would be ordinances. And it would be the only item for ordinances that's on the agenda would be consideration of a resolution approving the First Amendment to the Power Supply Agreement dated April 6th, 2012 between the city of Lake Forest and MC Squared Energy Services. That item would be discussed by, bear with me.
Yours truly. Thank you, Mr. Actney, chair members of the council. At the last city council meeting, you approved the amendment to the agreement with the IGA for the city's participation in the North Shore Electric Aggregation Consortium. The item that's coming before you this evening is with respect to the agreement that the consortium has with our power supply company, MC Squared. You may recall that last year, we entered into a three-year agreement with MC Squared with respect to their administration, if you will, of the power supply bids. Up on the screen there, and each of you just received a copy of the significant changes between year one and year two, because we went back to MC Squared, recognizing that we were, if you will, at the cutting edge. We were out ahead of all the other communities in terms of moving forward with our program. And after a year under our belt, we went back and renegotiated a couple of modifications to the agreement. First, you'll see up there, under the vendor margin, what we did was we locked in basically what their administrative fee was going to be of this vendor margin. And last year, it was locked in at .99. Through negotiations, we were able to reduce that down almost 20%, down to .79, which will result in the savings for all customers. Let me skip over fixed rate for a moment and I'll come back to that. The rec costs of the green, is the green energy. And last year, the city council recommended going 100% green. That cost was basically two cents per kilowatt hour. Again, going back now that we have seen not only Lake Forest, but others have come on and the way that we've been able to sort of restructure the language of the agreement, we've been able to cut that premium in half from basically two cents down to one cent. And the fixed rate is what we are anticipating based on where the market is today. Currently, we are at that .05 number per kilowatt hour. We anticipate that that number is going to be very close to where it is right now. Obviously, it's a commodity and it fluctuates almost daily in terms of what that price will be. But all the communities that are part of the consortium should adopt this agreement within the next week. And we looked probably within the next two weeks to actually lock in that price for another 12 to 18 months, whatever, again, is most favorable to our customers. Now, if you look at the bottom line up there with the estimated savings, it may look like we're not doing as well, but keep in mind that the first year, ComEd's prices were very high because they're, they hadn't been able to go out into the market and buy cheaper utility, or cheaper energy as well. And so they're starting now to come back to the pack, if you will. But we are still estimating that a customer in Lake Forest, under the MC Squared program, will save approximately $190 versus a customer who continues to remain on the Commonwealth Edison plant. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that anybody has with respect to the plan.
I thought I noticed one other provision in the new agreement, and that would be the waiving of any opt-out fee.
Yes, thank you. The first year, there was some concern about, because of the uncertainty, if you will, of how this was going to play out, not just in Lake Forest, but in the state of Illinois, a concern that residents would bounce back and forth between ComEd and MC Squared. So there was a consideration for, if you will, a penalty to try and minimize that. That hasn't been the experience, and so under the new contract, that $25 charge will now be removed, and so there is no penalty if someone was to leave the program and move somewhere else.
Thanks. Any other questions? Comments? Time filler? Do we have a motion?
I move that the First Amendment to the Electric Aggregation Power Supply Agreement be approved.
Thanks.
Second.
And this would be a roll call vote.
Alderman Novit?
Aye.
Alderman Waldeck?
Aye.
Alderman Pendeleon?
Aye.
Alderman Moore?
Aye.
Alderman Tac?
Aye.
Alderman Edelman?
Aye.
Six, zero, motion carries.
Okay, and lastly, it would be additional items for council discussion, and we have one. And I always wanted to say this, Alderman Edelman?
When, when, when do we plant these? Not tomorrow.
I think the city foresters all fled with the snowstorm.
They're in frost.
Wait till the ground has been thawed for a while, and so it tends to get the warmth in the rotten soils before it goes in.
So what do we do with them in the meantime? Keep them?
You can just keep them just like that.
Just like that?
Just fine. They've got some moisture in there and the oaks out.
Cool. Thanks.
Ash trees. Got them cheap.
We received...
And, and, Bob, Kylie, I know at least you got this, I'm not sure who else got this. But some friends of ours had a problem with some school bus traffic and we've had other questions about school issues. I just think for the record, when people have something to do with the school district, I think it'd be good to know that we, all we can do is call the school district on, as a, say that we heard something, but it's really, these are really school district issues, school buses and school hours and things like that. Some people seem to think that city council, that the superintendent works for the city council. So, I'd just like to point that we're following up with that one and, but we don't have direct access to affect bus routes or school hours.
Right, and we'll, we'll certainly educate the resident who contacted us. I think, to your credit, they know that if they bring something to the city council, it usually gets acted on, and so they figure, they'll bring it to you first and increase their chances of some positive resolution. But we've already reached out to the school, the school's looking into it and we'll be back in touch with them shortly.
And any other comments? My last comment, and we'll then be looking for a motion for adjournment, it's just as we're on the eve of snowstorm, drive safely, shovel carefully, and do we have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Proposed, none? Meeting adjourned. Thank you.
I know.